We are the hopekeepers, living to make a difference. And I'm loving, 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 loving. We are the believers. We are the hopekeepers, living to make a difference. And I'm loving, 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 loving. We are the believers. And there's nowhere like this, no, there's nowhere like this. And I'm loving, 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 loving. And there's nowhere like this, no, there's nowhere like this. And I'm loving, 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 loving. And there's nowhere like this, no, there's nowhere like this. And I'm loving, 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 loving. We have been in meetings, very productive meetings with A B C E, our teachers' union, for the last three days. They have been meeting with our bargaining team before that, but then I've started meeting with them to discuss the thing that's on everybody's mind, which is COVID-19 and what's going on in our community and in our state and our nation and the whole world right now. And so we came to some good, solid realizations recently, and the union has agreed to do some things that we thought if we could do, we could offer parents another option. So today, we're announcing that I'm going to recommend to the board, and I've got Mr. Moss here to share his thoughts on it. I have talked individually to each board member about many things over the last few days, but I'm going to recommend to the board a fourth option for our students and parents, that they will be able to connect to a new program called BayLink, which would connect them directly to the school and their teacher at home. The difference in that is it would not be a virtual school teacher, it would be their teacher actually at a school where they're enrolled, and they would have regular communication with that teacher, and that would be another option for parents. We've already heard from a plethora of parents that like this option. We knew they wanted it, but one of the sticking points, to be very candid with the union and us, was how are we going to do the video and do the presentation of the material to get to the students? So we negotiated and bargained in good faith, both of us. We both agreed how important this was, and so I can't thank the union enough for agreeing to step up and do this. They realize how important this is going to be to offer this fourth option to our community and our students. So that is the main gist. Part of this means, though, that we're going to have to take some more time to get the teachers to understand the processes that go into initiating and functioning of this fourth option, because we do believe there's going to be a good number, a high percentage of parents and families that will want to do this option. So we've sat down and we've analyzed, and we believe that we could give the teachers till August 20th to be prepared to open school then. Now, that means another whole calendar shift. So we're not only going to take option four to the school board on Tuesday, we're also going to take a new school calendar to the school board on Tuesday. There'll be... One main thing is school, our goal is still to end school the same week as planned. Now, it might go a day or two extra if we have to. Our goal is to try to get it to end the semester before Christmas, but we might not be able to do that. There's a lot of calculations and hours and seat time that's required, so we're going to finalize all that. We're hoping to have that today to go public, but in the negotiations with the union yesterday and meeting with them to talk about this, we wanted to make sure we got this out to the public as quickly as possible, because we have been talking about it since Monday, to be very candid. We believe this is a very solid option for many people. I truly believe that there is a need for this option, but I also want to share that I understand the angst that's out there and the concern and worry that many people have about this virus. We had a conference call this morning with local health officials. I will tell you that it was interesting that everybody on the phone that had children said their children were going to go to school and start school on time with masks on. I mean, that was number one. That was refreshing to hear that they feel that confident. I asked a very candid question. If we started school or didn't start school, is that going to impact or affect them in either way? And the consensus was no, that no matter what we do, it's not going to impact them. They do not see any kind of increase in pediatric cases or situations. They feel that they can handle whatever we do, open up or not open up or whatever. But I did have a sense that what they want us to do as a community is to wear face masks. And look, I'm not wanting to get into an argument about that with anyone. I'm just telling you from my heart, that's what I heard them say, and I know they're saying it because they want to protect people. I wear one when I can't social distance. When I get done this, I'm going to put it back on, and it has saved me from being in certain situations, which I'm glad I wasn't in. But I think most of us know that this virus is real, it's serious. We're going to continue to do everything we can to protect our students and our teachers and our support staff, our administrators, everyone. We're trying to make the best out of a very terrible situation that the whole world's in right now. I can't thank enough the union for understanding that this other option was extremely important to our team, trying to put together the most options we could for our students. I believe the board in my heart will support this additional option and the calendar changes we'll have to make. I know that everyone is concerned about the well-being of students and the well-being of teachers. I believe that the health workers have a right to be safe, just as much as I believe our teachers have a right to be safe. Everybody has a right to be safe in their job and in their work. And so we're going to do all we can. We believe that this change will also reduce the number of students in the classroom, which helps with social distancing, and so there's a lot of good things about this option. Now, I will answer questions. I do want to throw a curveball to Sharon, she didn't want to mention this, but with F H S A A and athletics, because that question constantly comes up. F H S A A today is looking at a waiver form to participate in athletics. If they will push that out, we will then address athletics that way. Until then, we're not comfortable in starting all sports. We are talking that some sports might start, but we are looking at the waiver option for everyone that wants their children to participate in sports. And so that's going to continue to go on. That will go on for several days, that conversation, but I did want you to know, we are looking at that, because we get so many questions on that. With that, I'd like to let our board chairman, Mr. Moss, speak. I'm going to properly put my mask back on and take my microphone off.
Okay.
Mr. Moss, I'm going to give you this. I know you know how to clip it.
All right. Maybe.
Does that work?
Maybe.
Okay.
First off, not only am I school board chairman, but more importantly, I'm a parent, and so I have some of the same concerns that some of those parents out there have. In our own family, we're deciding the pros and cons of whether you go the brick and mortar route or do you go the virtual route. Again, as a parent, I don't think there's really any concrete answer to say that's exactly the right way or the wrong way, because it's a unique situation, and every parent's situation is unique. I can tell you, talking to other parents like myself, the question they had over the last few weeks is, is there some middle ground? Because it seems like right now, it's all or nothing. It's either you go the virtual route, right, and you're, to some degree, on your own. I know there's still some support, but you go the virtual route or you go all-in on the brick and mortar route. Is there some type of middle ground where our students can continue the relationships that they have that are critical to our students in their individual zone schools or the school that they choose to be? And so I think this option that we're rolling out today should make parents very happy, because I think it is a good compromise between the brick and mortar and the total virtual route. It gives those students an opportunity to continue those relationships with their zone schools. They can still be Razorbacks or Dolphins or Marlins or whatever they might be, because they're continuing those relationships with the teachers at those schools. They'll still be enrolled in that individual school. They will not be a student of Bay Virtual School. They will be a student of whatever class and school that they are zoned for or choose to go. So again, as a parent, I think we listened, honestly, and as a board, we listened and said, does this make sense, our current plan? And the feedback we got was, we want another option from our parents and from our community, and that's what this gives, is another option to our parents. And again, there's no right or wrong answer. Every family is unique, every student is unique, and so therefore now this, again, just gives those parents another option to hopefully solve the unique situation they're in on what's best for their student. I know for our family, we were excited, and the parents that I've talked to so far, I know we've only rolled this out a couple hours ago, have been very supportive and very happy that there is another option. I understand that some parents will still opt to go the brick and mortar route in regards to being in a physical classroom with a teacher, with physical desk, and to those, fantastic. In fact, my family, right now, we're leaning toward that option. But for those parents that don't feel comfortable, and I know a lot of them, I go to Sunday School with them, they're in my community, I run into them at the grocery store, they're still not quite comfortable, and that's okay. This gives them another option to continue those relationships in the individual school that their student is zoned for or chooses to attend with those teachers, with those administrators. Now, I understand that this is a new option, so it's going to take some time to make sure our administrators and our teachers are trained properly to make sure it's a success. And that's why I believe the board is going to vote accordingly on Tuesday to push back the start of school, not because we think that these next two weeks or whatever we push back, that the virus will all of a sudden heal itself or will have some miraculous vaccine. Hopefully, that'd be great, but we're not pushing it back because we think necessarily things will get better in regards to the virus itself. We're pushing it back to give our administrators and our staff and our teachers time to prepare, to make sure that when we do roll this out, maybe later in August, instead of mid-August, we've done all of our due diligence and homework, and so it is a success. And so with that, I'll turn it over to our A B C E reps.
I'm Denise Simpson, the president of A B C E, and I am happy to be here today with Bay District Schools. As Mr. Husfeldt said, we have been working together over the last several weeks to try to ensure that the reopening of schools is safe for everyone who is going to come back to the brick and mortar, and we were trying to come up with options for our students and their families. Teachers want to be back in school. We know that brick and mortar is the best place for our kids to be. However, those schools need to be safe, and we know that some parents have angst about sending kids back to brick and mortar, and they wanted some options. This option that we've worked through with Bay District is the best option, I think, or a good option for parents to have. We want to stay connected to our students. We don't want our students to be someplace else. We want them with us, and this will give us a chance to stay connected to our kids. They're going to be a part of our class, their families are going to be a part of the schools. So in giving parents this option, I think that we've created a great scenario for everyone, because those who are afraid or a little worried about sending kids back to school now have a fourth option that keeps them connected to the Bay District Schools. I am glad that we have been working together side by side. I can't thank Mr. Husfeldt and his team enough for listening to what we had to say. We talked to our teachers, we talked to our families, we gathered what their opinions were, and we came together at the table, and I think we came up with a terrific solution that will benefit all. Thank you.
I'm the current vice president of A B C E, as well as the co-chair of our bargaining and negotiating team, and I just wanted to reinforce that what drives the decisions that the union makes, as well as what the district makes, are always the benefits of our students and their families. And one of the things that educators understand is that the relationships between, is not just between the educator and the student, it's also between the family and the school. I can't tell you how many people have come to me at Moat, which is where I currently teach, and tell me, now, I went to Moat, or my oldest child went to Moat, and they understand the culture of the school, and in many times, they want the next siblings down to have the same teachers and the same educational experience that the older children did. This is a great way to provide parents with a both-and option. As union leaders, Denise and I are big believers in both-and thinking. We need to provide both educators and families with as many good choices as we possibly can in a difficult situation. This is an elegant solution, because it doesn't put a tremendous extra workload on the teachers. We're already using the software platform. We had agreed early on, we were going to migrate to this single source called Canvas. We can record within Canvas seamlessly. And just to reassure everyone, nobody has any expectation that you're going to look at Ms. Underwood's face for 90 minutes as I teach reading. Remember that in a good classroom, the kids aren't just looking at the teacher, they're looking at the materials, they're engaging with formulas or text or PowerPoints or interactive things that help us present information in different ways, that help us meet the learning styles of every student. In some ways, distance really lends itself to that, because I can show the kids using my Canvas platform exactly the same thing I show them when they're sitting in front of me in the room. So there really is very little difference, except that I get to keep my relationship with those kids. That relationship I fight so hard for, that is the thing that enables me to be a good educator. It's not, yes, it's my content knowledge, but more than that, it's my ability to build a relationship with a student and a family. I've got to be able to pick up phone and call mom and dad. This enables me to do both of those things and still maintain my relationship with the kids, and that's why we're excited about this fourth option. We think it's an elegant solution to what's been a chronic problem for us since we started this distance adventure. Right?
Thank you.
Whoa! Just take off with it.
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you, Alexis. I also want to thank Denise and Alexis first, but another big part of this is that we know we're going to be facing classes that might have to stay home for a few days. We could even get to the point where we have to close the school for a certain amount of time. And so this Canvas option would be a seamless transition to that, and that's what we feel, because not only could parents decide this is best for my students to stay home and do this, but if a student is sick or the student has to self-isolate, they can go on and use Canvas, and then when they're clear, they can come back. So this is really the best of both worlds, and I appreciate the union and bargaining in good faith to get this possibility up and running for us. We're excited about what we're going to be able to do with this. Now, I'll answer any questions, and the rest of us will be here.
So when kids enroll in like Bay Virtual School, they have to stay the whole semester with this BayLink when children are home, but they're still enrolled in the brick and mortar school, is there something where they're at home, they want to come back to the brick and mortar school, they can still do that with them?
Yes, there'll be some steps we'll need to get them to do, but yes, they'll be able to transition back and forth for that. And here's what we didn't say earlier, it's going to be, if the board approves this on Tuesday, there'll be, parents will just have to go into Parent Portal and click on a button that their choice. They won't have to go in and do all kinds of things, they'll just click on a button of their choice. Yes, sir.
Okay, just so that I understand this right, so the new option describes the students that choose to enroll online will have the option to get those same teachers they would as if they were a brick and mortar?
Every student will have this option. Not just the virtual, every student.
Okay. So if that's the case, like what time, would these kids be getting up and kind of doing like live learning, like waking up the same time as the brick and mortar?
They would have to if they wanted to be a part of that live learning, they'd have to follow the schedule, but I think Alexis said it perfectly. We're not expecting a student to sit in front of a computer screen for seven and a half hours. Those lessons will be recorded as well, and they can go and catch them then, but if I'm a geometry student, which was my worst class in school, the great in college algebra and geometry was, the theorems and everything, so you might want to watch that live and ask the questions. And so the student's going to have that flexibility, the parent's going to have that flexibility. There's a lot of young students, the parents are going to choose this, but I can tell you, those parents are going to have to be right there with the child, watching it and doing those required lessons and activities that Alexis was talking about.
So those kids are going to have to watch it?
Her turn.
So in terms of Canvas, you said there are going to be live lessons?
Yes.
Will there be some recorded as well?
Everything will be recorded, but they'll be recorded mostly live, almost all the time recorded live, and then so they can watch it live, or they can go back and replay it and watch it, or they can, you know, save up a few days and go and do it, so they'll have that option. I think it's going to depend on the student, the student's ability, the parental involvement, there's a lot of factors that will go involved into this, whether or not their successes. But again, this is going to be on the parents. The parents are going to have to decide, they're going to support this, and they're going to make sure their children do, their young students or older students do what is required if they choose this option. Now, let me share this with you. This is not perfect. None of these options are perfect, because we're not living in anywhere near a perfect world right now, but we believe this is a good option. We believe this is an option that parents had told us earlier they wanted, and we just couldn't do it. And I know I've praised the union enough, they're probably going to come in and want a 55% pay raise, but they realized how important this was to make us be able to give parents and students that fourth option. And so I thank them for understanding that, and I think this is the direction we needed to go. Yes, sir.
So just to, you know, you said that this is also going to be like live or So, just to, you know, you said that this is also going to be live recorded. So, how are the students going to, who are doing this virtually, going to be able to interact with the livestream in addition to the kids in the classroom?
There is a method on Canvas for them to interact live if the teacher allows that option, plus they can always email the teachers. Canvas has all that in the platform, so that communication can occur. Now, the communication with the teacher might not be instantaneous, but there are methods and ways that they can communicate with the teachers.
So, now that this fourth option is in place, each teacher is going to be required to do this?
Yes, we are requiring the teachers to, and here's the question that we're having a principals' meeting right now that's gone over, and that's why we moved up here. But here's a question a principal asked, and it was a very good question, but there's a very good answer to it. What if all my students are in school, do I need to record it? And my answer is, yeah, you, yes, you do, because what happens is Johnny might not be there today, and then Johnny, somebody in Johnny's family might have COVID, or he might be sick himself, maybe COVID or something else for three or four days. So Johnny's parents then can go to that video, go to Canvas and pull it up and help Johnny do his work while he's out, for whatever reason. So, that's why we think this is significant and important.
I mentioned, I didn't mention, but I talked to the principals that they had loved, and they were excited about this because specifically the ACE and the IB diplomas.
And the parents are too.
Can you mention that, because there's no online connection?
Yeah.
Did you want to get that?
And what I've heard from, I've even got emails already from parents that they like that connectivity to the school programs, whether it's ACE, IB, the collegiate study program, or whatever. That connectivity is there, so they'll be able to stay in that program. One of the parents emailed me and said, pre-med program that her child's in, this is a great option for him. So, the parents are very excited about that. Thank you, Mr. Moss.
I'm glad you brought that up, it was one of my questions. I know some parents that have kids that are going to the IB program, but decided to enroll in Bay Virtual School. Now with this new option, are they going to have to do?
All they got to do, that's when, if the board approves it, they will go into Parent Portal, click on which option. If they click on whatever option, we will take care of the transition change.
What's the deadline for that?
They can save that program.
We don't, we haven't set a deadline. Obviously, we don't want to wait until August 20th and do it the day school starts, but we think by the middle of August should be, should be good. We think a lot of parents are going to get on there quick and choose this, and it's just going to help the programs. Because let's be very candid. The kids that are in these programs are in these programs because their parents are more involved in their education. The number one factor of student success is parental involvement. I'm not telling you anything you don't know, that's a fact. So, I know these parents are the ones who are going to get in and start pressing those buttons as soon as that button's there. So, that helps us to figure out where these program numbers are going to be. So, the sooner they do that, the more prepared the schools will be and the better off we'll all be in the long run. Again, I don't want anything to, I don't want anybody to think, that's a perfect solution. There is no perfect solution in this. There is no perfect solution in anything we're doing right now. There is none. We think this is a very good option. Okay?
So officially, what will be the first day of school then?
August 20th is what we're going to recommend to you, but the calendar's going to look totally different. So, we've got to play, they're over there crunching numbers, it is analytical getting all that.
On a Monday?
No, that's actually Thursday, which I think is always better to start on Thursday, because nobody's ready for five days straight when school starts. They're all about to pull their hair out.
So, if this is approved on Tuesday, the new calendar is still as marked right now?
The new calendar, we think the new calendar, the proposed new calendar should be out the end of the day today. That's what we're hoping. We did not want to wait until we were perfectly prepared to do this, because we wanted to get the word out there and let everybody know what's going on. We have, we said on this last night, the board members knew about it, the union leadership knew about it, we all agreed. We put the cone of silence on it until we could all come together and do this. We were not trying to blindside anybody. We want everybody to know it at the same time, so we could, we could share the information. Look, there's going to be a lot of questions about this, there's a lot of things that we haven't thought of, that we will have to answer. We'll be doing an FAQ on this, just like we do with everything else. All right? Good? All right, now, everybody will stay here if you guys have individual questions, and do whatever you need.
Thank you.